We are blessed to have a preview of the the school musical, which is going to be sliding this weekend. Matilda. Our director, Laura, you follow on Mr. Rogers.
We're very excited for this weekend. I we have the most incredible creative team too. The greatest group show together and the children of South Hunterin are going to deliver. So I'm really excited. Our show Thursday night at 7:00 p.m., Friday night at 7:00 p.m., a show Saturday at 2:00 and Saturday evening at 7:00 p.m. So I hope everyone can enjoy it.
When I grow up, I will be tall enough to reach the branches that I need to reach to climb the trees you get to climb when you're grown up. And when I grow up, I will be smart enough to answer all the questions that you need to know the answers to before you're grown up. And when I grow up, I will eat sweets every day on the way to work and I will go to bed late every night. And I will wake up when the sun comes up and I will watch cartoons until my eyes go square. And I won't care because I'll be all grown up when I grow up. When I grow up, when I grow up, I will be strong enough to carry all the heavy things you have to haul around with you when you're a grown up. And when I grow up, when I grow up, I will be brave enough to fight the creatures that you have to fight beneath the bed each night to be a grown up. And when I grow up, treats every day and I'll play with things that moms pretend that moms don't think are fun. And I will wake up when the sun comes up and I will spend all day just lying in the sun. And I won't burn because I'll be all grown up when I grow up. This is met by me, prince or princess, you will soon see those same big tragedy. And even if you put in pizza and birds, you're just wasting energy. The life that you know is his ancient history. Oh, it's the first day. It's like this, this is the name. These days were over. The feeling of the day. Five, did you hear what we said? Just you wait for me. What's this? Full education is the trench for speciality. You're people. This is met by me, a prince or a princess, you should see those same big tragedy. And even if you put in pizza and birds, you're just wasting energy. The life that you know is his ancient history. Oh, it's the first day. It's like this page for ages, this would be. These days were over. You are putting the feeling all around. Oh, he's so.
Hello, I would first like to apologize for my absence of last month's meeting. I came down with a nasty paper, so I was not able to protect it. Okay, for our sports this month, the athletes of the month are Liam Syrup for Winter Truck, Connor Keys for Boys Basketball, Noah Legg for Wrestling, Sophie Henman for Girls Basketball, me for Bowling, and Noah for MIA for Wrestling. For Girls Basketball, our star player Katie Cummings ended her four years with a final score of one hundred, one thousand five hundred and six points, making her the third highest basketball scorer in both men's and women's in South Hunterdon. For Boys Basketball, they will continue and play their first round of states on Wednesday. For Winter Truck, Liam Syrup participated in the NJ SIAA Group One Championship for High Jumps on February 25th. And for Wrestling, they won against New Hope on Rumble on the River, which was, they won, which was so exciting. For Spring Sports, our Spring Sports star marched. And finally, a recognition for Ed Cooper. He was honored at the Mini Maxwell Award Dinner on February 2nd. He was selected as one of the top football players in all of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. For Clubs, our key club, our key club celebrated school bus driver appreciation. They made handwritten notes and thank you letters for each bus driver, thanking them for their hard work and dedication. And not being just, night at the nest, sorry. Night at the Nest practices have started this month and students have been practicing for their final dance and the games are going to be competing in nights. For the Musical, our South Hunterdon Musical, as we just saw, they're having three run, three day run this weekend, Tuesday, when, Tuesday, oh my God, sorry, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They have a show on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights at 7:00 p.m. and matinee at 2:00 p.m. on Saturday as well. And you can buy the tickets by searching up South Hunterdon Musical 2025 Tickets. This month, we celebrated FFA Week. Our student, our members of the FFA went around the building, providing snacks and refreshments to all the teachers and staff. And they had a whole week dedicated to it, so they had different themes per day. Tuesday was PJ Day, Wednesday was Camo Day, Tuesday was, Thursday was Matching or Twin Day, and Friday was Blue and Gold Day. And lastly, our Festival of the Arts took place this month, which is really cool. It was a presentation of all the arts of South Hunterdon, visual and performing. Our visual arts included 3D sculptures, watercolor painting, and ink sketches and more. And they were presented from both the middle school and high school students, so a variety from all students at South Hunterdon. And there were live performances as well. The high school jazz band performed as well as the high school vocal ensemble. And the musical also put on a presentation to preview their show. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sergio. With that, we'll go to PTO and the LAF updates. We'll start with LAF.
Thanks, guys. Good evening. So a couple events here from the, or notes from the LAF. First is our spring event is coming up on March 29th, Saturday. It is a LAF auction, slightly different than what you're used to, and casino night. So we're trying to mix it up a little bit. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Amwell Valley Fire Company in Ringo's. Tickets are available on our website. Encourage you to definitely check it out. It'll be a lot of fun. You know, we're also continuing to look for table sponsors, so we have sponsors that are for each of the different gaming tables, so blackjack, things like that. So looking for table sponsors as well, and all that information is on our website. Secondly, we are also working with the Guidance Department and team for our summer and senior awards for this year. We have put out the announcements. I know for our summer awards, our senior awards are coming quickly behind that. I know, I believe the summer awards are due mid-March and senior awards will be due after that with the evaluations happening in May. And then obviously our senior award might in, you know, in May as well. And lastly, I'm just happy to say that we've seen an uptick in grants, so we're very, very happy about that. We've actually reviewed four grants at our last meeting earlier this month, and two of which were approved. I think one of them, Physics Day, we'll be talking about later. And we have a couple more that are kind of coming back through for another review in our upcoming meeting. And so I know I've seen some additional traffic, so we're really excited to kind of see something about uptick and we hope it continues, so. And that's really it from us.
Thank you, Mary.
Sure.
PTO.
Hey, everybody. That performance was awesome. I'll take that kind of drama at the board meeting anytime. We have our March Kids Night Out coming up. It's going to be Friday, March 14th. As always, 6:30 to 8:30 registrations open on Membership Toolkit. Hopefully, we can get them outside. It goes much smoother when we're outside. Beyond the Bell Registration closes this Friday. It's really exciting. After the social media push today, we have almost 80 students, so that's pretty, pretty awesome. Like I said, it closes Friday. We will not be accepting any forms after Monday, March 3rd. And that's due to the fact that some classes have to be condensed and we have to shuffle people around, teachers around. As it stands right now, we have enough to run 12 classes. If we get more registrations by the end of the week, we can run 14. So that's pretty incredible for such a small school. And we started planning for our fall semester already. We started reaching out to current enrichment teachers and locking them in for the fall. We have like four or five that are, that are going to come back. And we're hoping that chess, drawing, and mad science will also be returning as they were our most popular classes. And then today I started reaching out to, I started digging into the surrounding area and their enrichment programs. Hopewell, Hopewell offers, I mean, the stuff that they offer is kind of like mind blowing. So one of the companies I reached out to is a mobile app inventor and they use a program from MIT and they teach the kids how, like coding and how to make mobile apps. And they run it through fifth and sixth grade, but there's actually a man in Newtown who's fully trained in this, so I emailed him and I asked like, where do we, where do we go? But it's kind of where the world is trending, so it would be pretty exciting to offer that to our students. I also reached out to some of the programs that Hopewell uses. They use First Tee, a greater Trenton. It's a golf club. And a lot of these programs, they kind of run themselves, which is another perk. They, they train the people and we just kind of handle registration. I reached out to Lego. They do STEM. I mean, they do it in the middle school, but we could offer it down in elementary school. And I reached out to a company called Firefly. They do all kinds of stuff, nutrition, fitness, tennis, STEM, you name it. They, they do it and they, they do all the things. So that's kind of where we're looking to go. We're looking to kind of step up the game a little bit and make sure that we're offering everything we possibly can to the students in the district. So hopefully, we can roll that out in the fall, pre-K 4, and then see what, what the 5800 holds for us. The walkathon date down at the elementary school is Friday, April 25th, with a rain date of Friday, May 2nd, and we'll be working with Ms. Burkhead on that to get that rolling. And then we have middle school end of the year events. The fifth and sixth grade dance and activity night. I know dances aren't everyone's favorite, so we're going to let them do whatever they want. They want to dance inside, they want to play outside. The World's Third Oyster. That'll be Friday, May 30th, from 6:30 to 8:30. It's a drop off event. We do need help with all of these things, so anyone who wants to help will take it. There will be a DJ, candy bar, glow sticks, treats, outdoor activities, something for everybody. Then the sixth grade class is going to go to Dorney Park Friday, June 6th, and we'll be fundraising pretty heavily for that. I think if you have a middle school student or a pre-K student at West Amwell, you got a Gertrude Hawk packet, so if you could please sell that, I'll post it on social media. It's a little tricky because you have to put a seller in with the code, so I could always just put Partigan in or whatever. But look for that. And then we have the middle school end of the year picnic Friday, June 13th. It's directly following school. That is a half day. There will be a barbecue, wiffle ball tournament, and an inflatable obstacle course for students, pre-K, and then fifth and sixth, to kind of end the year. And then the elementary school field day is Friday, May 16th, and it's going to be at the elementary school. There will be inflatables, fun stations, and an outside barbecue for the kids for lunch. And then the middle school on the occasion field day is Wednesday, May 28th, and we're going to work with Ms. Ryan on details for that. And then next we have Penny Wars coming up. We've never done a Penny War, so it's pretty exciting. So it's going to be pre-K through 6. I'm just waiting on confirmation from the office for 7 through 12, but at the elementary school, each grade level will be getting a jug and the students will bring their change, no paper money in each day and the class, and the grade levels will compete against one another, and then the winning grade level will earn a prize of some sort. The middle school kids said that they wanted a Raising Canes parties. I did reach out to their community outreach program to see if they would help us out with that, so we'll see where that goes. The theme for the elementary school is Super Mario Brothers, and then the theme for the middle school and location is March Madness. And then gets a little trickier at the middle school level, so they're going to have two jars per class. It's not grade level. Each class, pre-K, fifth and sixth will have two, well, the pre-K will have just one, but the fifth and sixth graders will have two jars. They'll have their main jar that they're going to put their money in, and then they're going to have one where other classes can put money in to take away from their, from their amount. So it could get pretty competitive. And then we also thought, we kind of wanted to spread the love a little bit, so we decided that we were going to donate half of the proceeds of Penny Wars to a local charity. And since the sixth graders are doing a community project right now, they're working with animal abuse shelters. We are working with Mr. Hollihan to hopefully donate and work with the sixth grade to donate half of those proceeds to a local animal shelter. So it's pretty exciting, so save all your change and send it into the buildings. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Good. Thank you very much. Okay, correspondence, we did have some correspondence this month. That is all available online with the agenda for the public to review. Up next, we will need, we're going to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and the executive meeting from January the 27th, as well as our reorganization meeting from January the 6th. Thank you, Ronnie. Can I have a second?
Second.
But Erin, thank you very much. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. Next, this evening, we have Ms. Patricia Reese from the New Jersey School Board Association, and she is here to talk with us about school board ethics. So Ms. Reese, thank you for coming out.
Thank you for having me. And it's wonderful to start a meeting with this performance by the students. I mean, because that really is why you're all here, is to, you know, to help your students and, and music and the arts are near and dear to my heart. My daughter is an elementary music teacher in Middlesex County, but she's also at a high school in Somerset County. She's the assistant director of the marching band and the director of indoor drum line. So I've been like a band mom since for many, many years and still now I'm the band mom's mom. But, but, but you know, it really is why we're all here, is for the students. So as, as Jim said, I'm Patty Reese. I'm from New Jersey School Boards Association. I've been with the association for 10 years, almost 10 years in this summer. Before that, I was on my local board in Somerset County for 12 years. And you, some were asking about Gwen Thornton. She is still with the association. She is now the Senior Director of Content and she's based mostly in Trenton. She tries to get out to districts periodically. But her gain into Trenton is my gain to be able to come, come back and be closer to home as I live in Somerset County. So I'm very happy for that. So tonight, we're talking about ethics. You know, it's, it's something that we encourage boards to do every year and it is monitored, you know, on Q-SAC. So if you want to, we'll just go through this. It can be somewhat dry because it's legalese, but it really is important information. So I always start with our So I always start with our standard disclaimer that this presentation is for informational purposes only. Uh, if you have any questions about legal questions or anything else, please contact your board attorney. Go ahead. The, the School Ethics Act was, um, was, um, enacted in nineteen ninety-one, um, and it really is a way, um, to monitor the, um, make sure that board members are living up to the expectations of their community. Um, and this is the actual wording of the School Ethics Act, and it just in the second box, you know, that board members and administrators must avoid con- conduct which is in violation of their public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is, is being violated. Um, you can go, um, it made, and school board members and school officials are really the only ones that are held to the standard in New Jersey, only elected official. Um, and, and it's a pretty high standard. But the legislative intent of the act, um, is to make, is to preserve the, the public's perception and the con- the confidence that your, their schools are being managed appropriately. Um, and what this School Ethics Act does is having a specific set of standards that you are held accountable to. The Code of Ethics is, is that list of standards. And then they have a disciplinary mechanism so that if you don't live up to those standards, that there's something that can, there's some discipline that can happen. There are several provision, provisions of the act. The, um, Code of Ethics applies only to, uh, school board elect, school board members and charter school trustees. And the mandatory training requirement is also applies only to school board members and charter school trustees. That I just saw something that came, came through our email today that more and more states are, uh, implementing mandatory training for boards of education. Um, whi- which is interesting to see because this has been, New Jersey's done this for many, many years. Uh, the list of prohibited acts, um, applies to all school officials and all school officials have to, uh, submit a, uh, financial disclosure and, uh, conflict of interest disclosure statement on an annual basis. That's that it also includes board members, school administrators, charter school trustees and administrators. And we at New Jersey School Boards Association also have to supply a disclosure statement every year. Who was on the School Ethics Commission? Uh, and, and the School Ethics Commission is the, uh, organization that, um, enforces the act. The School Ethics Commission is a, uh, set of nine members that are appointed by the governor for three-year terms. There can be no more than five, um, commission members from any one political party. Of those nine, five are non-school officials, two are school administrators, and two are school board members. But if you see on the, the graphic that currently both school board member seats are vacant, and there is only one school administrator on the commission at this point. How that impacts things is a decision. They can't enact a decision unless they have, by, they need six people. They, they need a quorum of six. So if there's a meeting that happens and they don't have six people there, that just delays the decision for however long until they can get to the six. We, we're not quite sure why they don't, why they're not, um, failed. I'd say it's an appointment by the governor. Um, you know, that it's just, it's just the way it is. I'm not sure. I remember the last time it was a full complement of commission members on the staff. So for your financial and personal relative disclosure statements, anybody that's newly elected um, or, um, or a, a new administrator must file their disclosure statement within thirty days of when you were sworn in or as an administrator when you started your position. Um, returning school officials have till April thirtieth of every year. Generally comes to you by email um, from the Department of Education. Um, and just for your reference, those, those, um, disclosure statements, and I know you, because it, it, you've been on the board a while, you know, you've done them. They, they are public information, so you can go to the School Ethics Commission and look up anybody. They don't, it's not really your whole finances. It's just to make sure that there are no conflicts. Um, but sometimes, uh, people are surprised that it's public information. Um, so the School Ethics Act also identified exactly what training is necessary and mandatory for new board members. There is a new board member orientation training program that must be completed within ninety days of when a board member is sworn in. Um, and that's relatively new. Two years ago, you all, you had a year to do that, but they, but, um, they felt that there's a lot of information as a new board member that you really need to have quickly. Um, and so that's why the ninety days is, is done. We just had our second for, for the, for the November, you know, those that started January first, we just had our second weekend. Um, but we also offer for all the trainings. We offer in-person, um, live virtual, uh, and then also a self, a self-paced course that you can take at your own convenience. Um, governance two, you have to take by the end of your, um, the end of your second year, and that is, is about finance and policy. Governance three is about student achievement and labor. And then governance four is every time you're re-elected, that first year of your reelection, you have to take governance four, which is a legal update. And that the legal updates are, um, up, updated every single year. There are two, um, avenues that people can, there are two um, ways that you can interact with the School Ethics Commission. As a sitting board member, you can ask for an advisory opinion. And what that is, is in, in anticipation of an act that you might do or vote that you might take, you can ask them if they feel that it would be, uh, uh, you know, it would be a violation of the Code of Ethics. Um, again, you have to ask for it before you've taken any action, um, and that, um, and that whatever information they give you, you abide by. Um, and that, um, uh, you know, this is where you need six members to get a decision, but. And sometimes board members think an advisory opinion is just that. It's an opinion, but it really isn't. When you're seeking that opinion, um, they expect that you will abide by that opinion. Uh, if you don't, then, um, if somebody files an ethics complaint, your penalty could be harsher. Uh, and the analogy we kind of use is a police officer tells you that something that you're going to do is illegal, and then you do it anyway. Um, you shouldn't be surprised if you, you know, for the repercussions of whatever, what, whatever legal repercussions that might be. And just in a, I'm not gonna go through all these, um, uh, because I know you have a full agenda, but I will explain how it is to, how you can read these. These are, um, different advisory opinions that were decided and released in two thousand twenty-four. They can decide them, but they also need the six members to vote to release them. Um, what, what you're seeing is, and tomorrow I can send out, um, a PDF of this, of the, of the PowerPoint to your superintendent. The, the, each case is linked. Um, and you see the first one says A fourteen, uh, twenty-four. A, a signifying that it's an advisory opinion, um, and twenty-four signifying the, the, um, the year that the decision was reached. Um, and so, um, you know, this one, um, the first one, just, just to go over one. Uh, the, the board member asked if they could review the resume of candidates before voting on the superintendent's recommendation. The advi- the School Ethics Commission said that it's outside of their jurisdiction to decide whether or not a board member can, uh, look at the um, resumes of the candidates, uh, before they vote on it, but that if they do, um, that they have to be mindful that it is only upon the recommendation of the superintendent that you can hire someone. Um. So that's in, as you go through, um, sometimes they're quite interesting to, to, to read the School Ethics Commission, and there are links at the end of it to get to that, but it's a subset of the Department of Education. So you can find all this information on the Department of Education website. Um, you can go through the next one, which is also more advisory opinions. You know, if you have time, read through some of these because um, it's, it's helpful. Um, yeah, a lot of the advisory opinions show up in, in guidance on conduct that they, that you can and can't do. Uh, and so in reading through some of them, um, it really does help, um, especially when you get to things like social media, which we'll go to through in a little in a bit. Um, so the other thing that the School Ethics Commission can, can look into is if somebody filing an ethics complaint against, um, a school official. Excuse me. Um, and it's a very specific claim that must, that, that can be made. Um, and it can be made by any member of the public uh, against a school official and keeping in mind that, that they don't have to live in your community. They don't even have to live in New Jersey. That when, when board meet, some boards screen their meetings or record them and, and save them. Anybody, anywhere can look at that and file an ethics complaint. But if they do, uh, they have to file it within a hundred and eighty days of when they say it occurred. Uh, they must, um, include what section of the School Ethics Act, um, they violated. They feel the board, the school official violated. And they must provide the factual evidence for the, um, commission to look into. Um, and and they're not gonna do research. They will only look into the information that is provided to them. And then if it's against a school official, that school official will have the opportunity to respond. Uh, but again, it's only what's presented to them. They, they don't have paralegals that, that go out and do the research. It's not investigatory other than presenting, um, what it is that, um, that is given to them. Uh, and the, the key thing, one of the key things that factor into their decision um, is they, they look at, can or would a reasonable person think that the ethic, the School Ethics Act was violated, the Code of Ethics was violated? There's really no definition of who that reasonable person is, but that is something that, a standard that they use, and it's really one of the few areas that it's kind of used is, is in, um, school ethics complaints. Those slides shows the different levels of penalties or sanctions that, that the School Ethics Commission can recommend. And when I say recommend, they go through the case and they make a recommendation, the recommendation to the Commissioner of Education who then can decide to agree, change it, or, or do something totally different. So, uh, the first level is a reprimand, and the reprimand is simply that, that just like a rebuke by the commissioner that the board member violated ethical standards. A censure takes that up a step. It's not only a rebuke, but you have to have a resolution at your local board meeting acknowledging that I'm publicizing that as a board member has violated the Code of Ethics. They can also recommend suspension of a board member for any period of time. And finally, they can suggest, uh, recommend the removal of a board member completely. Um, and when, when you're suspended, that means you can't sit at the table. You get no information. It's as if for that period of time, you're not a board member. Um, that's, I mean, mostly I see re- reprimands and censures. Sometimes a suspension and very rarely, uh, a removal. But it's still, they can do that. So the next several slides go into the actual Code of Ethics. Um, and there are ten tenants of the Code of Ethics. Um, and I have a handout I can give you that lists the Code of Ethics. Um, a- as opposed to reading through every single one of them. Um, but I just want to draw your attention to the bottom. The Code of Ethics is listed, what, what's listed there? And on the bottom, it's the standards or the factual evidence that somebody must supply if they're going to file an ethics complaint. Uh, and that's the kind of information that, um, that the commissioner is looking for. I, if you want to just kind of cycle through, um. Then, you know, B, it's all, all there. As I said, it goes through J.
Pete. You recall, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but if you recall at our, at our reorganization meeting, we read through this list of items.
Yeah.
Take a turn.
Yeah, that's okay. No, no, most boards do. That's helpful because I feel bad about not reading through them. However, you have a full board meeting and, and, um, if you've read through them and I'll give it to you as well. Um, it, it, it's just, you know, the, the important parts of those is to look at what the code says and what the, what factual evidence somebody would have to supply, uh, if they, if they feel you violated. The, the next couple of slides are about, um, Code of Ethics cases. And again, these are linked. So the first case, C forty-five twenty-three, um, when I send the, the PDF, um, tomorrow, uh, you, you can click on that and see the case. What you'll see as you read through this, it identifies, um, what, um, what the violation or the board member, um, whoever submitted the complaint, uh, what they thought was the violation. Um. And, and as you read through that on the bottom, it, you, you'll see in the, um, the code, not the code, the, uh, the law, the statute, uh, eighteen A twelve twenty-four, but in parentheses, you see E. E is the tenant of the va- of the Code of Ethics that, um, they said, um, that was supplied that, that the board member potentially violated. Uh, in the first case, it shows that, that yes, the, the Ethics Commission felt that they violated tenant E, um, uh, uh, of, um, of it, of the Code of Ethics, which essentially is that authority rests with the full board. Um, you can't make any decision. An individual board member has no authority unless they're sitting at the, the board table at a notice meeting with form present. Um, that, um, and they recommend this, this is, this case was decided and the commission, um, must have agreed. So this person, this board member was censured. Um, and the next one, they say call a reprimand. And the next one, you can see that they violated tenant C D and E of, of that. This one, this one says a recommended reprimand. So this is still waiting for the commissioner's decision on this. And again, this is, uh, tenant E, which is authority rests, um, arrests with the board. And this one, this is an interesting one. Um, uh, this is a recommended suspension of sixty days. I've not really seen that, um, before. That too much, you don't see that too much, but in this case, it might be notable to say, you know, a board member, um, a, a board member, um, took inappropriate action that was beyond the role of a board member. The action of the board member usurped to the authority of the superintendent was responsible for making disciplinary recommendations. The board member took it upon themselves to go to the employee's home, pick up a letter, present it on behalf of the employee, directed the BA to not um, give a copy of the letter from the employee of the employee to the superintendent. And then instead of recusing herself from the matter, um, in which she had a personal interest and personal involvement, the board member advocated on behalf of the employee and questioned the superintendent's recommendation of that employee. So that board member clearly went above and beyond, and you see that, that, that she is a fifteen-year board member. Um, I, I, I do believe that she, it's been on for a long time, but I think, um, before the, the case was resolved or had the recommendation, I think she lost her next election. But again, like you wonder, what were they thinking? All right, we'll go to the next one. There, it, there is a difference between recusal and abstention. A recusal signifies to everybody that you feel or it's been determined that you have a legal conflict and shouldn't participate in the discussion or the vote. An abstention is, is if you don't feel like you have enough information or you're just not comfortable for whatever reason. Again, a recusal is you feel, uh, or it's been determined that you have a legal conflict. Uh, and it comes out in how the votes are tallied. So if you're, if it's, or if it's an abstention, it So if you're, if it's or if it's an abstention, it might be five-three-one. Right? So five-four-three against one abstention. If it's a recusal, it'll just be five-three. And and so, which could impact things when you have to have a supermajority vote. But again, a recusal also means that you don't participate in the discussion and you don't participate in the vote. The School Ethics Act also identified different acts that they, that the school, that is felt to be prohibited by board members. And the recommendation is to recuse yourself, if any, from that list, if you have a financial involvement that may impair objectivity, and you might might see, there's a few cases over the years where people had a side business that that making, you know, like t-shirts for the soccer team. And they they, should they, you know, when it came up for a vote on on using that service, that person really should, they needed to recuse themselves. So that's kind of what that is, if there's any financial gain to you or anyone in your in your immediate family. It also identifies. It gives the definition, what they consider the definition of a benefit, which is a direct or indirect advantage, profit, privilege, or gain, whether personal, financial, or otherwise. And again, the determining factor is the perception of the public. There, if a reasonable member of the public feels, believes that the the school official is not objective, then that that carries weight. And the the case that's cited here is about an acting superintendent. And I think one of her first meetings, this came out of Middlesex County as well. In one of her first meetings, there was a list of all the substitutes for the coming year. And she did not read this, fill this before it went before the board, and her son, who'd been a substitute in the district, was on that list. And she should have read it and should have, like, you know, she just should have read it, should have read it ahead of time. And then the challenge is that, you know, as a superintendent, she can't hire her you can't hire family members, as a board member, you can either. And so there was that, and they recommended the, that they recommended that the and it was approved by the by the Commissioner to reprimand that, to reprimand that superintendent, she's still there. This, these next slides talk about, just show some cases where there's to kind of identify what a conflict, they feel a conflict or or benefit to a board member is. And again, you'll see that in the first case, it's they recommend, the Commission recommends a reprimand that they feel that the board member violated A, tenant A and C. A being they will uphold the policies and procedures and laws of the state of New Jersey. And that the board is a policymaking body. So through the advice, and this is where it's helpful to kind of read the advisory opinions. Through the advisory opinions over the years, the School Ethics Commission has further delineated what is considered a family member. In the beginning, a family member was somebody who lived in the household, their dependent, you know, a spouse, a significant other, a dependent child. And through different cases, it's become much more complex than that. And and you see in the second paragraph, things such as a stepbrother or sister, or half-brother or sister, an individual spouse or partner by blood marriage or adoption. Those are all things, all relationships that could be considered a conflict. And I I said, talked about this before, as a as as a superintendent or a board member, you can hire your relatives. But if you become superintendent, or you become a board member and your relative already works here, that doesn't mean they have to be fired, it just impacts what you can and can't do. If you're an administrator, you can exercise any direct or indirect authority over their, over their own relative. And if you're a board member, you can't take part in any employment matters, if your relative already works here, employment matters concerning the superintendent or any supervisor in the chain of command between your relative and the superintendent. So if that's a principal or a supervisor or a director, then as a board member, you'd have to recuse yourself from that, any discussion whatsoever on that. And then if you're looking for a new superintendent, you can't be part of that process, you can't, any part of that process. So in collective bargaining, it also impacts, if you have a family member, it impacts what you can and can't participate in. This graph kind of shows that, so if if your immediate family member works in the district, then you can't be part of the negotiations. You can't, also can't take part in the ratification vote. But if 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 it's your, you know, if you are the, a staff member in another district, or a relative is a staff member in another district, you can't take part in, I'm sorry, you can take, if they're part of the state same union. You can participate in negotiations. However, after the memorandum of agreement, salary guides, and total compensation package are agreed to, you can participate in the ratification vote. And if your relative doesn't work in the district, and they're not the same, not the member, they, not in your district, but they're not a member of the union in the district they're in, if it's the same district, you can take part in both negotiations and the votes ratified. The only proviso is if your family, in 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 one of these, if your family member is a, like a a a member of the union in a leadership position, either on the county or the state level, that would impact whether or not you can be part of negotiations, and on that, I would say, you know, talk to your board adjournment. There had been some cases where unions have, the bargaining unit has endorsed a candidate for school board in hopes that by endorsing them, that they could not participate in negotiations. And so what they say now is that that that's not necessarily the case. If you get an endorsement that doesn't include any money or any financial gain, you know, campaign donation, or that there's no expectation that you will vote however they want you to vote, then the the recommendation is just sit out for the next the next round of negotiations, if it's the same year or the next year. That's really where they're going now with that. One of the things that has come out in advisory opinions and ethics cases is the impact having a family member work in the district can have on you as a board member. In the first instance, it's the board president. And their child works as an instructional assistant in the district. And how that impacts the president, now, in in most boards, the president sets the committees. The president, in this case, can't choose the chair or members of any committee or be part of any committee that remotely touches upon or directly relates to their family members in employment. So that really does impact impairing the ability of the board president in those. I mean, an instructional assistant, there are several committees that they may not put people on. So you just have to be mindful. So something else that has come out recently and and in with the School Ethics Commission is P, board members have been using what they call the the advice of council defense. And they've decided that, I guess it happened enough, and there's a case reference there from two thousand twenty-one that had now identifies, if you want to use the advice of council defense, you have to do these four things. You have to seek the advice before you took the action, that the person you're asking the advice from is qualified or has the authority to give you that advice. If it's, if you just can't go ask, you know, the notary public, you need to get a legal guidance. And I, the other thing is, like, a, if you're going to seek legal counsel, has to be somebody who's familiar with education law, not like the land use attorney down the road. That you have, the third thing is you have to, to, you have to have disclosed all the important information. And then whatever advice they gave you, you listen to. Now, you can use that defense, and if you can prove all four things, you still may be found to be in violation of the Code of Ethics, you just won't get a penalty. Or you'll get a lesser penalty. But you still could be found in violation. Super members are among the most active people in communities, do many, many things. The the, the Code of Ethics doesn't prevent you from volunteering in the schools. I mean, you always have the right to, you know, among others, advocate for your child, if your child's in 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 the school. But if you're going to volunteer in the schools, just be mindful of of certain things. Don't, it shouldn't be frequent, you shouldn't be in the district, in the, in a building, two to three days a week. Because it it might give the impression that you're managing the day-to-day operations, if you're in the district that frequently, in a building that frequently. You should never supervise or give instructions to students or staff. Again, that implies that, you know, you're managing the district. We strongly recommend that you not handle money since you will handle the district's finances, let somebody else, if you're doing a PTA or PTO activity, or you're you know, volunteering at your kid's basketball game, don't be the ticket collector, let somebody else do that. But, you know, if you want to, if there's whatever else you want to do, you can, just be mindful of that. And then if you're going into the school at a, at an invitation maybe of your child's teacher or a specific class, let the superintendent know, give them a heads up that you're going to be in the school. It it's just really helpful to them, because, you know, especially in smaller districts, people know who's on the board, and and you may not think they do, but especially your staff, they know who you are. And they're they're not as familiar with the the chain of command as others are. They know that the board is up here and the superintendent's here, and it just could put them, put the staff member in an awkward position, not knowing what to do, and and we we don't want to do that. This slide just talks about inherent violations or not. I mean, you know, I'll go with the not, at one time in frequent activity, read across America, executive, you know, the PTA person, that that should be fine. But voluntary, being a volunteer coach is really not appropriate anymore, because you're directing, right, you're now you're directing students, and if you're a coach, you may have to direct maintenance staff to do something with the field. And so it's, that then gives the impression that you're you're managing things when when you're not, it's not within your authority. Let me get on to social media. The School Ethics Commission spends a lot of time in recent years adjudicating social media cases. But as as what the the School Ethics Commission looks at with social media, they consider the content, the substance, and the context of whatever it is that was posted. And again, there's that, if a reasonable person would believe the statement was made in their official capacity, then they will rule, they will rule that the board member has violated the Code of Ethics. It's all about be, but not, not giving the impression, especially on social media, but anywhere that that you're speaking for the board. And with that, we go to the next slide, it talks about a social media disclaimer that is recommended that you use. And and the School Ethics Commission gives one for you. You don't have to use that word for word, but you do need to, if you're going to use a disclaimer, need to state that it's your personal opinion, that you're not speaking for the board, or you're not making any representations for the board. However, even if you say that, when I said in the beginning that they look at content and context, there have been board members who have used a disclaimer and still been found to be in violation, because the content and context of what they, what they posted, they will that, you know, a reasonable person would think that they're speaking for the board. So be very, very careful about what you do post and make sure that you say that I'm speaking for myself, and you know, my capacity as a private citizen, I'm not speaking for the board or implying any action on the board. A few slide, a few questions about, you know, Q and A about the the School Ethics Act. Again, you could use a disclaimer and you could still be found to be in violation. There's, a couple of years ago, there was a significant case out of Middlesex County and very volatile school board election, and 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 they felt that they did violate the 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 School Ethics Act. And again, by using the disclaimer, like I say, it's not a get-out-of-jail-free card, you, they still look at the content and the context of what what it is that you post. And if you share, you know, some of this, some some guidance, if you had a campaign account, social media account, once you become a board member, it's recommended that you don't use that. Because your average member of the public doesn't really understand, doesn't really pay attention to, because they don't have to, timelines, so that that, you know, what you may have posted on your campaign before you were sitting board member could be very different than what you post after. And they're not going to know that difference, so a reasonable person might look at something from a year ago and say, oh, well, that's how they feel about this particular issue, which, as we all know, once you sit on the other side of the table and you have a broader range of information, because that's, you know, what what you get when you're a board member, your opinion may not have changed, but it may have changed. So so please don't use a a social media campaign, a social media site once you've been elected, a campaign site. And bear in mind that, last time I did this, somebody said, well, somebody running for municipality does. I said, because they're not bound by the Code of Ethics. You are, they don't have the same restrictions. You know, keep in mind that the school budget is probably the biggest budget in your municipality. But, so, you know, be mindful of that. If you're sharing something from your personal account, a family event, even if you're saying, I'm seeing Matilda, the 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 school plan, this, you know, you can do that, just don't put any editorial commentary is is really what it comes down to. And don't be the administrator of the social media page, because then you're the one who the administrators get to judge what comments stay and what they don't, what you know, what comments stay and what they can delete. And it's just best as a board member not to do that. Again, generally, people know you're on the board, and your your comments and your opinions carry extra weight because you're on the board, you're an elected official. So that's the, 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 you know, it's kind of long, kind of a lot of information. But thank you for all that you do. And, you know, we continue doing what you're doing, especially in these times that are very challenging. Again, and then here are some, some of the resources that and links that are available, should you have any questions, but I'll take any questions now, if anybody?
Anyone from the board have a question?
Nope. And I'll just, this is the Code of Ethics, my card. In case, and if anybody has any questions, I I am always available. My contact information's there, you don't report back to anybody. If you call me, I'm going to, you know, answer your question, and I don't call my boss, your superintendent, your board president, it's kind of confidential. But anyway.
Thanks, thank you very much for coming. Have a safe travels home. And just so board members know, the presentation was linked on board docs, so it's available to you, go back, everyone look there. Okay, with that, uh, we come to the first period of public comment, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we do, I'm so sorry. Let's have the superintendent's update then. Um, alright, so just one thing I wanted to point out, though it was really important. Um, putting together this presentation and moving forward, you'll notice another, a new graphic I have here in the corner. Just, I think it's important to keep our strategic plan front and center. Right, and I just felt like, you know, having this, these are. You know, the five different tenants that we talked about, when we developed our strategic plan as community, obviously our mission statement, which is in the middle. But that truly does drive all of our work, so you'll see that graphic on our presentation moving forward, just so we can kind of keep that front and center. Um, so I want to provide an update on preschool, also on the West Amwell, uh, school water situation, as well as the building update. An update on five eight, and then talk about something new that the board has been working on with me, um, about Performing Arts Academy and what that's all about. So first, in reference to preschool, um, I just want to formally announce at, at the board meeting tonight. That our plan, uh, moving forward for preschool for next year and, and probably beyond. Uh, if you look, we are working on developing in. Uh, a three-year lease with the St. John's School for preschool. And our plan for next year in September is we will house three preschool classes at the elementary school. And the other two will be at St. John's, so, uh, we'll also have in the language of our contract with St. John's. Um, you know, an escape clause, just in the event that there was funding that was cut from the state, so we're not stuck into a lease. Uh, but that will be our plan for the, uh, district preschool moving forward. For next year and hopefully for the next several years, once we work through the lease. So just an update, uh, on the water situation. For, for West Amwell, uh, we did receive communication from the DEP. Uh, since our last board meeting, basically that communication was really one of three options. Um, the first option was determine whether or not Lehigh Fluid could remediate the issue on their site. Before it even contaminates enters other wells in the area, um, the DEP was. Not exactly sure if this was possible, it's something that's being investigated. The second option was install an expensive and complex wo- wo- complex water treatment system. Which would be the responsibility of Lehigh Fluid Power. And then the last one was connect to existing public water supplies for Lambeville City, so, um. As I had mentioned in the past, the DEP has appointed a, what's called a licensed site remediation professional, an LSRP. Who we're waiting to hear back from, just to work on next steps. Uh, I know it's a little difficult to see at the bottom there, but in the meantime. Lehigh Fluid has been reimbursing us for all of our bottled water that we're using for cooking and anything else on site. Um, but they are working with us on that. So that is the water update, so then, what does that mean, next steps for West Amwell next year? So we will move out of West Amwell at the end of this school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. This includes the staff that is currently housed in the front house in front of West Amwell, they'll be relocated to a building. Uh, we currently have a commercial real estate broker doing a broker's opinion. Andrew and I met with him for the first time back on January eighth, I believe it was. Uh, he had told us he'd be working on that over the next couple of months, he is doing it for free for us. And the board is waiting on that, we did share, uh, upfront, some of the environmental issues that we're dealing with with the water. Just to kind of take that into account when he does his broker's opinion. Uh, we'll continue to wait for a solution on the water issue as we work with the DEP and the LSRP. And then once the board has all that above information, they'll make a decision as to next steps for West Amwell. Just a couple of other things I wanted to make you aware of, for the five-eight building, save the dates. So we're going to be having, um. A fourth grade parent night, so obviously, you know, a lot of new with the new building, it's going to be opening up. You know, how's the building gonna work, schedule, what's the academic schedule gonna look like? What courses will students be taking, what electives will they have, you know, the opportunity to take world languages? All those different things, so we are going to be doing a bunch of parent nights, we're going to do a separate parent night just for our fourth grade parents. Obviously, they're transitioning out of the elementary school. That's gonna be on Wednesday, April ninth, we'll do that at the elementary school. Um, and then we're going to do a five through seventh grade parent night on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, so all of our. Current fifth, sixth and seventh, that will be rising up next year at sixth, seventh and eighth. We'll meet with them, we'll do that here, typically in the future, we will do that at the new middle school, but obviously it's not ready yet. Um, so we'll do the fourth grade one at the elementary school and the five through seven. Here, uh, at the high school, and then we'll also have, which we normally do, an eighth grade parent night. On Thursday, March twenty-seventh, for all of our current eighth grade parents, rising into the high school next year. So just keep that in mind, we'll remind you with more details as we get closer, but I wanted to kind of put that on everyone's calendar. Alright, so let's talk about this, so we, um, we've been talking about this for the last few months in a variety of different committees. Just to kind of give you some background, so you're probably familiar that Polytech. Which is the vocational program within the community, um, has been expanding upon their academies and a lot of their programs. Um, are four-year programs now, you know, I know when, when I was in high school. Vocational programs were typically in eleventh and twelfth grade, but that's evolved. Um, eventually, all of their programming will be four-year programming. So even some of their traditional two-year programs in, in eleventh and twelfth grade will evolve into four-year programs. So I requested a meeting with their superintendent back in probably early November. Just to talk about that and talk about possibilities for our district. And I posed a possible situation to the superintendent of whether or not he'd be interested in partnering with us. Develop a performing arts a- academy here on our high school campus. Um, for some of my high school parents, you're probably aware that right now North Hundred and Voorhees hosts several different academies. So I felt strongly of, you know, why can't we get a piece of the pie? And some of the other, you know, high schools are already getting a piece of the pie. So we sat down, we kind of talked, had some initial conversations. Um, after thinking about it, he was very supportive and interested in moving forward. Uh, so we are moving forward and I just wanted to share some details of our planning and where we are and, and what this program would look like. Obviously, what we saw tonight, well, that was not planned, by the way, but it just kind of happened. Um, where we were doing the Matilda performance, so this just kind of gives you a little bit of a timeline. Um, we are in the process of developing, so with Polytech, this would be a joint effort. It would fall under the Polytech program, but we would house the program here at our high school on the campus. Um, starting in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so not next year, but the year after. Um, the academy would be open to obviously our South students, as well as other students in Hundreden, as well as other counties. So it wouldn't just be Hundreden County, um, if there are students who in neighboring counties have an interest in a performing arts. Program, however, their county either doesn't have one, or if there's not enough room in their county for a number of seats. Um, they would be open to applying to our program. Right now, what we're looking at is the first year, it would be kind of a rollout over three years. We're looking at a theater and a dance program in twenty-six, twenty-seven. In the second year, we're looking at more of what we're calling a music education, which would include a vocal, instrumental, and then the technical theater. So all the aspects of the behind the scenes, um, you know, many of our students are into that technical component. From the design of the sets to also all of the visual, audio and all the things that go along with that, the lighting. That piece of it, and then we're also going to investigate down the road, the possibility of maybe adding a visual arts component. Obviously, our community is well-versed in visual arts, it's a huge thing for our community, so it'd be, it would be a great fit. Um, I really thought, thinking about this, uh. Performing Arts Academy makes sense for our community. You know, it's interesting, when I had this conversation with folks outside of South Hundreden, a lot of times when they think of. South Hundreden, Lambeville, the first thing they think of is the arts, right, because of our community, so that was the reason why. Um, I decided to move in this direction, plus no one else has it, so it's a great find for us. Moving forward, looking at. Kind of what this looks like right now, there would be an entrance criteria, so students would have to audition. Right, so there would be a criteria that would be set up by our teaching staff, our teaching staff would run the program. Our teaching staff would still belong to us in the program, but they would conduct auditions. Right now, what we're looking at is sometime late in the fall, so maybe late November, maybe early December, we would have auditions for the theater and the dance program. Our plan is to offer twenty seats in each program, so for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would offer twenty seats for theater and twenty seats for dance. Obviously, some of our students might take up some of those seats, but hopefully we would have students from other places as well. Um, again, students from other districts who are accepted in the program become our full-time students. Right, so they participate not only in, you know, the theater program or the dance program. But they're taking all of their grad- graduation requirements here within our high school, they're participating in all of our other extracurricular activities, just like our students right now. That are in, whether it's a biomedical or animal science or whatever it may be, they belong to North Hundreden or Voorhees. But these students would belong to South Learn to be our students. Right now, the current student tuition rate that we pay for our students to go out of district to the Polytech program is ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars per year. So for each one of our students that decides that they want to go into a four-year program. Um, right now, that's how, how much we need to pay, so that would be the tuition rate. Uh, we would work on how we would divvy that out, so right now, North Hundred and Voorhees has a contract in place with Polytech. Where a certain percentage goes to the district and a certain percentage goes to Polytech. We would do the same, however, I believe that our contract would be more advantageous to us. Because we would get more of a cut of the pie, because we're providing all the staff. Right now, North Hundred and Voorhees is not necessarily doing that, Polytech is providing the staff. So again, for any student that was coming from out of our district, we would generate that tuition as part of our revenue. When we talk about student experience, since we're partnering with Polytech, this would be a career technical education program. So what does that mean? It means that our students, as part of their experience over the four years, starting in ninth grade. Would get real-world, real-career experience out in the field. And that would be a continuum, so it would look, you know, more minimal in ninth grade and more extensive in, let's say, eleventh and twelfth grade. So what that could mean is, for example, Jane Ellen and I had a zoo, um, last week on Thursday with Music Mountain, the two owners of Music Mountain. They're very interested in partnering with us, they're very interested in perhaps taking students in junior and senior year. And having them do an internship for credit in the academy, working at Music Mountain, right? So that's just one example, where again, that work, um, experience in the field for students who are really, really serious about this. That perhaps want to go on to college or, you know, into this as a field of, of, you know, their career down the road. This work-based experience is an important component of that, so it's not just taking classes here at South. It's literally getting out in the field, we're having folks to come in and do master classes. So it could be a professional actor or professional dance instructor, whatever it may be. Um, you see, there's a variety of different things that I've listed here. Um, for dance team, we could participate in UDA dance competition, which is a national competition. There's a lot of different avenues and places where this could go. Um, our staff has been working on designing this and has come up with some really unique and cool ideas. Uh, for what like a junior and senior year could look like in the program. Just so you know, the way it would work is if a student completes three years, three years in the academy program, they get an endorsement on their diploma. So when they get their high school diploma, they would actually be a performing arts endorsement on that diploma. So obviously, if they're applying to a college or university and they want to study the arts, that's a huge piece for them as far as accepting some things along those lines. So next steps, um, we've put together what's called an advisory business partnership committee. We have, actually have our first meeting next Thursday on March sixth. And the committee consists of myself, Jane Ellen, the Polytech Superintendent and their Director of Critical Instruction. We have local businesses, as I mentioned before, we have our teachers in the program, we have a counselor, child study team member. Um, and folks that are in the field of theater and dance that will be joining us. And the first meeting is all about, you know, kind of us sharing our ideas, but more from the community side of things, what do they think? From their professional expertise, like what could this program look like and what role maybe could they play in this program? Either by providing us insight on what it should look like, or the experiences for our students to actually go out in the field and earn course credit. Um, curriculum planning, so the sequence of cursing, so we've had some release time for our performing arts department. You know, and they've been planning out what ninth grade, tenth, eleventh and twelfth would look like. We're working on articulation agreements with two and four-year colleges, so obviously we want our students to be able to get dual enrollment credit. So we're working on that, um, we have to get CTE accreditation from the NJ DOE. So we'll submit a pretty extensive application before the end of the school year, and hopefully we'll get approved by that over the summer. Uh, promotion of the program, so the nice thing about this is. Polytech would actually handle the promotion of the program for us. They have a, a recruiter that they've hired, who's Director of Recruiting for them. Um, so they would have the opportunity to design different things as far as brochures. And if you've seen them as parents, things you get in the mail or whatever for their programs, we would take the same approach. Um, and then like I said, our, our staff is developing an audition process. And then we're looking at facility planning, right? So, you know, a lot of folks have asked, with some of the additional room that we would have available to us now, with seventh and eighth grade will be moving out. We're looking at that and how that could perhaps play into the academy program and what that looks like. Um, so, you know, and again, we have time, based on the audition process, and how many kids we get, that would really dr- drive. Facility conversations, if there was anything that we wanted to do, let's say, nothing would happen this summer, but the summer of twenty-six in preparation for September of twenty-six. So it is exciting, um, we'll continue to work, you know, through it and I'll share updates as we go over the next several months. This advisory committee will meet in March and then we'll have a second meeting in April, we'll have minutes for that meeting that we need to submit to the NJ DOE. Um, and our teachers are really excited about it, obviously you saw some of the talent that we have in our theater program. Um, you know, like we've had conversations with Laura DeStall, who's very, very excited about it. Has some college partnerships and connections of, of herself, that she's already maintained, so, um, you know, I think it has a lot of promise for the district moving forward. Okay. Uh, board members, you have any questions?
So Tony, I know we had, we've talked about some of these questions, but just for the benefit, um, of others, um. What, uh, what was, what, what are we looking at for like the minimum size to, to run with? Let's say, I know we wanted to do twenty and twenty, um, but depending on how many applications we get.
It also, it also depends on how many applications we get for students outside of the district as well. Because that's where we're going to generate the tuition, which is going to offset the cost of the program. So, you know, app, you know, typically the way it works right now with Polytech. They have an application deadline, I think of around December fifteenth. I actually had a phone call with the superintendent today, just to talk about, we probably would bump this up. Sometime in November and then auditions would take place, and then by January tenth, we would want to offer seats. And then we would give students a week to decide whether they accept them or not, and then from there, that's going to really drive. Next steps as far as can we actually do it, facility-wise, what we would do and how much tuition we generate.
Like, but, um, and even on the flip side of that, what if we, you know, we have twenty seats, but what if we only fielded, you know, worst-case scenario, so we're like fifteen. Applications or auditions, would we still continue?
We would, I mean, right now, we have the staff, right, so we're not hiring anyone new. Um, obviously, down the road, if the program with the grow, we would use the proceeds of the tuition to help fund or fund staff. Um, but I see it as for next year, like we have, or two years, we have the existing staff in place. So the hope would be at least for year one, if we only got fifteen seats for each program, we still can still do it, yeah.
Any other question? So is there a scenario where something like this gets popular? And there are students in our district, went after addition that wouldn't be able to get into the program because of the auditions and people coming from outside our district. Why don't you do this?
There's always a possibility of that. You know, depending upon the level of talent and, and the teachers would develop that audition process.
I think so, um, how, since we are using existing staff. How would having a program like this impact the availability of those staff? Members to existing students for just regularly offered classes?
It wouldn't impact at all, if a student wanted to take a theater class but didn't want to be in the academy, they'd still be able to do that.
Okay, so these classes would be mixed between kids who are in the academy and then just regular South students who want to take.
Exactly, students who are in the academy would have a requirement of different things they would have to do each year. Obviously, students that weren't, would take a theater class in ninth grade and then. Take something else in eleventh, but not tenth, like it's totally open and flexible, kind of like it is now.
And what makes that possible is the, the teachers were teaching middle school, so they won't be teaching those classes now. And what makes that possible is the, the teachers were teaching middle school, so they won't be teaching those classes now. A couple more time in the school. Tony, you talked about, this is like a true partnership with Polytech. And so we have to look at facilities or any kind of equipment.
Yes. So the, the nice thing about partnering with Polytech is we can utilize their budget. They get a lot of funding, like they get over two hundred thousand dollars a year in what's called Perkins loans. And it's specifically geared towards, uh, CTE programs. So like, one of the first things that the superintendent asked me is like, equipment-wise, what do you need for your performing arts center or what would you need for this? Because, so that's something that we work out, where hopefully they could fund things like that. We, you know, we just did a lot of work a couple of years ago in that space. But there's other things that we can try to utilize. You know, if we're going to take an existing classroom and renovate it into a dance room, right? They could help with the cost of that, you know, rather than to come out of our district budget.
How would busing work if we have students coming from out of county possibly?
Just like it does now, we would be, their districts would be required to transport them, just like we do. Where we have to take students to, you know, North Hundred and Voorhees and even some other places outside of Hundreddon County. It would be on the districts to do that. Or provide what's called a blue.
Right.
You know.
You can stipend to that.
Exactly.
Just to, just to clarify, so the, uh, the courses that were up, what really sets the academy apart is the sequence of what you take, the total number of credits and the classes they could take and that gives you, and, you know, getting accepted. And that's kind of gives you that, uh, uh, credit, whatever it's called, on the diploma.
Yeah.
So you could be taking other students, not in the academy, you could take lots of those classes. But if they don't do it in, under the guise.
Sequence and also that work-based learning experience.
You would not get that extra.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other question? Okay. Um, now it is time for the first, the period of public comment. Um, so as always, uh, we will open, uh, to the public for comment on any item, anything you want to talk about. Um, just a reminder before we start public comment, we do have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during a period of public comment, the member of the board charged with running the meeting that's made shall warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting or being removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained and appropriate behaviors such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting interruption and use of profanity or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or defamatory. And no participant may speak more than once during each public comment session. Um, we do have a second one later in the meeting. So, uh, at this point, uh, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the board, we ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and the community where you live and try to keep your remarks to the board to about three minutes. Does anyone have something they'd like to bring before the board for Zebra?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Matt Larkin. I live in Lambeville. Um, so always, I want to thank the board for everything that you do, um, putting a lot of time and work and I really appreciate it. Um, around the Performing Arts Academy, so I have a little bit of experience supporting that, um, as a volunteer. Um, I do think that, you know, just from the things I've done, that there really is these, you know, synergisms that you could create, like even the technical part about building a, a stage and things like that. That's, that's a lot of work and there's a lot of electronics going on in that. Um, do you have like a plan, just, you know, just put together, you know, is it going to cost us this, this year? And then, you know, like, do you have like points where if we see this, then we know we would need to do this thing to build another theater? I'm making it up, but you know, has, has that kind of, just those, um, you know, three, four, five-year contingencies been thought about at all? Could you share that?
Not yet. We're still in the design phases, so that will be happening over the next couple of months. But my goal here is not to cost the district more money. So, I mean, you know, I think, looking at the experience and I've met with, uh, the superintendent in North Hundred and Voorhees about this on several occasions, like, the goal is not necessarily to make money either, although that would be nice, is to break even and provide an incredible experience for our kids.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, it's a school. You don't want to make money either. You want to teach kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have something they'd like to bring before the board?
My spill it was that well, uh, so I'd just like to point out, you know, the referendum part of it was for, we need to get seventh and eighth grade out of the high school and have more for high school students. We now have twenty percent of the high school population with choice. That's according to your data, Mr. Soza, in December. If we, let's say, worst case, forty of these kids, we actually get forty kids in, twenty dance, twenty theater, that would mean one-third of our high school students don't live in the district. We would be trending towards the majority of students at the high school not actually living here. So all of our thirty-three-point-four million dollars of the referendum is for what? The people from Flemington can dance here? The people, kids from other counties, from Mercer, from Somerset can come here? Come on. How much money do you think we have? Nearby, uh, communities are saying, we're looking at six percent increase of the budgets. We have people saying we need tens of million dollars alone. And South Hundredden has tens of millions of dollars to spend on anything? Come on. Wake up.
Thanks for your comment. Does anyone else have something they'd like to bring before the board?
Hello, Andrea Little from West Anwell Township. Uh, we're getting to this time of year. The budget review will be next month. Uh, and hopefully, we're going to be outlining to the public the upcoming year, identifying key takeaways by building teacher resources and, uh, fund allocations. We do hope that we can be close to that two percent cap for the community, um, because the community's been stretched with a lot of change in the district and maybe some of that change was needed and um, maybe some, you know, we can be like more thoughtful for. Um, so I have a couple of different questions and points, and I did see about, you know, your plan with, um, Jesus School. But, um, I had a couple of questions just to make sure we're like understanding what choice is. And choice is meant for being a spare seat in the district that, um, needs to be occupied. Uh, but we do also know that this year kindergarten choice put that age group to three classrooms versus two. So I'd like to know, um, as a statement, uh, if you could explain to the community at some point for twenty-five, twenty-six, what the choice decision was by grade? Um, because I believe that came out in January, um, that you would have that information, if I'm not mistaken. So are elementary classes going to have choice in there? Um, we know that the elementary school is very tight. It doesn't really accommodate additional kids in our, you know, in the district or outside. We really want to keep it two classrooms for our district to keep the classroom size as small, which the educators last week were pointing out, um, or last month. So that was one of my questions this year, like, will you, will you share by grade what the choice allocation is? And then number two, um, I do know there's a curriculum open position open, which I know that there needs to be support there. Uh, but I'm just kind of curious on when you're going to be approving for that description, why it needs to be a principal? If that's a state regulation, I, I don't know that answer. Uh, because it feels like it could be like a director or is that something that could be like per diem work to get started? To understand what that job responsibility is, uh, just by adding another administrator to, again, this small district just seems like a lot as we're configuring to the new three buildings. Uh, to keep that in mind, it can maybe be creative on just putting less burden onto the district and putting it more in the classroom and the books and, uh, resources for the teachers. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else have something they'd like to bring before the board?
Do we know anyone?
We do have one. It's from, uh, Shannon Burkhead. And it's just, the South Hundred Regional Education Association in partnership with Amwell Lodge Number Twelve, free and accepted nations would like you to save the date of April third for our annual family literacy night. Join us to listen to a read aloud, play bingo for books, participate in activities that promote literacy across content areas and more. Students will also get to take home their favor from thousands of brands of new books we are giving away. We look forward to seeing you there. So I did send, I think, today, earlier today, just to save the date, and then we'll send out some more information as we get closer.
Okay, if there is no other, uh, public comment at this time, I will close the period of public comment. There will be another one at the end of the meeting. Um, Lucas, anytime if you're ready. Do your homework. I'm sorry, I should have said something beforehand, but, but appreciate your report. I, I will say, Lucas, do you happen to know the dates of, uh, Night at the Nest? Is it twentieth, first and twenty-second or something like that? Um, like the third week of March, I think? Fourteenth and fifteenth. Okay, thank you. Yes, so it's coming up. So it's only a couple of weeks out. Um, tickets will no doubt be on sale soon. Uh, if you have not been to Night at the Nest, I encourage you to go. It is a very cool um, student competition. I mean, it is great to watch these kids. They compete really hard and then they all hug each other and get together at the end. It is a lot, a great community thing and a lot of fun. It's a two-night thing. But Lucas, thanks again for your contribution. Have a good night and a good day in school tomorrow. Um, with that, we'll move to our committee reports. We'll start with buildings and grounds. Mr. Bryant?
Bryant. So finance, building, grounds, presentation, safety committee met February twentieth. Um, my notes are valid as of then, if anything's been updated since then, feel free to let me know. Um, building and grounds update, so school construction, now, Tony, in your, in your update, you provided some stuff already, so EP released the T W permit. So as a result, septic equipment has been ordered and we're just beyond the septic field. And as of Thursday, uh, we're still waiting for approval on the sprinkler system in the DC end. Yes, still it is. You mentioned, or brought up the water, the water issues that were at West Anwell School. Um, and again, like Tony had mentioned, with the potential options were, I'm still waiting for guidance, official guidance from the DEP. Guess the important take home from that is bottled waters being provided for everything up there for the, for the students and the staff. Um, the pre-K program, we mentioned that. And so since then, St. John's has agreed to the three-year lease with the exit clause if we lose the funding. Um, and we're still waiting on the board's opinion for the next steps for West Anwell School. Been documents, just being prepared for the athletic field, uh, will be an update. Our next steps will be discussed in the March meeting. Um, I had in my notes that the bus delivery was scheduled for today. I don't know if that happened or not, and comes Wednesday, Wednesday. And then after that, air registration will follow. The appearance of bus maintenance, bus inspections took place on the seventh and the fourteenth of February. And everything is up to date, buses. Safety update, district safety council meeting occurred on the eleven. And then just the, the items A through L to approve this evening. I'm including those field trips in there, grant acceptance, O E F, great for physics day. The, the South Hundred and Regional Middle School Building Improvement Resolution to approve the name and address of a middle school. So with that, I moved, uh, I moved, yeah. First and move items A through L.
Well, moved. I can add a second please.
Second.
A second by Jen, thank you. Uh, any discussion on items A through L? There is no discussion. Let's vote. Jennifer Bachford?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Nina Fushay?
Yes.
Frank Keys? Yes. Kevin Kobaleski?
Yes. Kevin, are you there? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
What's your, yes. Ronnie Tom Marino?
Yeah.
Tim Gallagher?
Yes.
Personnel.
Can you hear me, Tony?
Um, Personnel Committee met on February nineteenth. And at that meeting, we, uh, were advised of personnel actions and appointments that are on the agenda this evening. Additionally, we, uh, the, the superintendent advises of two personnel issues in the district. We were provided with an overview of the district's non-tenure review process. And also, um, the negotiations committee, uh, started negotiations with S H R E A. That's where we were given status update on that. And finally, um, the committee was provided with the job description of the principal in charge of instruction and special projects. So with that, I would like to move the personnel actions listed in item nine or personnel.
We also need to move the item.
Where's the extracurricular?
Extracurricular appointments?
Yep.
Yep, and extracurricular.
Okay, so you're, thank you for, Mrs. Fushay for moving motion items A and B for approval. Uh, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, so Leary, thank you. Any discussion on that? Um, I would note that, uh, Emma Sneddon, who was on, uh, listed here as, uh, to be hired as a, a leave replacement kindergarten teacher as a South Hundred and alum. And I always love to point out, um, many South Hundred and alum that come back here and, and contribute after they've completed their college, so. Very excited. Any other discussion on? Then let's go. Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Fushay?
Yes.
Frank Keys? Yes. Kevin Kobaleski?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Lex Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Yeah.
Tim Gallagher?
Yes.
Uh, curriculum and technology, Strauss?
Uh, we met on Wednesday, February twelfth. Uh, so we started off with a technology update, um, and advised us that we would be getting quotes. We actually just moved them in, uh, Brian's approvals. Um, uh, just to take note, we did pull as much equipment as possible from West Anwell and extra stock from the high school before those quotes came in. Uh, we also went over briefly the data meeting reviews. This was the first time that the high school had, had met um, to do the data meetings and, um, the five to six, um, was able to kind of drill down a little bit further as they'd already been through the process. We talked about the March seventh Professional Development Day, which will include a wellness day for our staff, um, the PTO thing, who will be providing lunch for them. And, um, then it'll be ending with time for discussion and collaboration across both grades and departments. We talked a little bit about the dual enrollment program, which again is a new program that we started this year. Um, and talked about successes and where, you know, we wanted to kind of blast out a little bit in the future. Uh, we've got thirty-one students currently taking dual enrollment courses. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Lennon talked about meeting with counselors, um, and administration to improve scheduling availability in the future. Um, we also talked about looking at additional options for, uh, both classes and with successful partners that we know our students kind of go to. So, um, Arabian was, was one that was mentioned. We looked at middle school updates for next year. Um, obviously, we'll be doing some curriculum writing as uh, STEM Ag and World Language Theater will be moving from specials to longer form and, uh, semester quarter classes. And, um, also, we went over the process that we actually go through when engaging teachers to write that, uh, curriculum. As mentioned in Tony's update, uh, there will be parent information nights for the middle school. We also talked about, uh, high-impact tutoring. We, uh, were able to get sixteen students signed up, uh, between two days, uh, to do high-impact tutoring, which will help us, uh, kind of move them from one uh, testing number to another. So it's kind of our cusp of students that we were, were focusing on. And then we talked about the Performing Arts Academy and, um, then finally, two new things that came from last month, uh, were bumped off. So we will be starting an, a English curriculum pilot program, um, for grades nine and ten. And, uh, it was brought to our administration by the teachers, uh, so we're really excited to see this piloted. And, um, like wit and wisdom, it does have a multimedia approach and balances with nonfiction tasks, which is part of our new standards. K through five social studies curriculum, um, will also be, uh, coming in next year. And we're, we're currently looking at a new program and more to come on that. But that, uh, K through five social studies program.
Okay, thank you for the report. Uh, policy, Dennis?
Policy that on.
Policy that on February fifth, virtually, we have two mandated changes over the. Respect the policy and regulation. The first one is seventy-four forty-one on electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds. The changer has to do with a clarification related to the policy, the policy and the regulation already provide. That school districts with at least one school building that is with video surveillance equipment. Capable of streaming live video wires wirelessly to a remote location. Must enter into a memo of understanding with local law enforcement, which will provide the authorities with the capacity to activate that equipment. And streamline video, the clarification that was added, and that's in the policy today, is that should be done in emergency situations only. So that language is being added to the policy and the associated regulation and in South Hundreden. There's already a requirement, there be um documentation from law enforcement, so we actually activate that service. For the policy and regulation that ninety-three twenty cooperation with law enforcement, which is also mandated, there are two changes and one. A slight addition of language, there is an option for the superintendent to designate a law enforcement unit for the district. For South Hundreden, there are dedicated memo memos and memorandums of understanding with each local law enforcement department, so that option is not necessary for us. And uh the section now addressing handle with the handle with care program, which is required by the New Jersey Attorney General. The program requires law enforcement officials to notify the district when a student enrolled in the district witnesses something traumatic outside of the school environment. Designate an individual for that handle with care notice. That is now incorporated into the policy and regulation, and that is our superintendent. And then we needed to add the designation for other drugs in the second paragraph of the policy to address that cannabis. Is now uh no longer a controlled substance, but it still triggers reporting obligation to local law enforcement. Um, those are all first reads, so there's nothing on second read. I do want to mention it's not in the agenda, but we did discuss. A non-mandated change to regulation fifty-one seventeen on inter uh inter-district publics and choice. Having to do with a priority to siblings of students who are already part of the choice program, because that is. Not in the agenda, but it just hold that, we'll say that as a first read when we talk next month, but nothing to move.
Okay, well, these are, these, don't we have to move these for the first reading? We do move these. We'll move, we'll, we'll move these items for first reading. And then that will be available for all of us to look at and read, and if you have any cha-changes or suggestions for changes, we will communicate those to Martha.
There you go.
She will bring those to the next meeting, and at the next, in the March meeting, we will move the second reading, and at that point, they will become the district policy. But this is your op-opportunity to look at policy. While you're in the policy book, but feel free to poke around and look at some other policy. Uh, okay, well, so that said, so. You have made a motion to move item A. Right?
With that policy and regulations?
Yeah, to to approve those on the first reading.
To approve on the first reading, yes.
Okay, and so then we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Any discussion on? First reading of those policies? Okay, let's vote. Gina Feshi?
Yes.
Frank Keys?
Yes.
Kevin Kobaleski?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Yeah.
And Gallagher?
Yes.
High school and communities.
Well, maybe met on February eighteen. Um, we continued the discussion about the twenty twenty-five committee goals. Um, last month I shared that we. Uh, decided that we wanted to expand on ways that the district celebrates academic achievement. Um, and also developing um parents resource guides, developing various topics. Um, and then we also added the goals of meeting with representatives from the community. Um, to improve and then being expands collaboration and um. On certain activities and also just to strengthen partnerships. And we talked about um beginning the development of the the volunteer database, which is a part of the teaching plan and action plan for next year. Our next four. Um, we also took a look at the climate survey. If um folks remember, the climate survey is something that we've put out, we've been putting out every year. Past few years.
Mm-hmm.
And um so we wanted to take a look at those, at the the data collected from the last survey and then also um approve the questions so that that can go out. We'll have to wait on that program, which is distribute the survey. And we talked about end of year celebrations, starting, um, shared there's going to be an end of year dance for the sixth grade. And sixth grade um class will have a trip to Dorney Park and yes, picnic. And then for the fourth grade, there will be a breakfast in Brad with an award ceremony and um video on graduates over the years. Um, and we took a look at the twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar, which is ready for.
Okay. Well, move, uh, can I have a second on that? So.
Item B.
Make a move to. This is, so moved, and we need a second, a second from Mr. Strauss. Now, are we approving the calendar?
Yes, we are, okay.
All right, any discussion on the calendar? I have, yeah, do we know, so our holiday, our Easter, our spring holiday?
Yes.
Whatever we call that now. Um, do we know, are we taking the same week of spring holiday that surrounding school districts are taking?
Yes and no, some, but not all. Um, honestly, what we looked at from the calendar committee. Uh, or the school and community committee, uh, and some discussions we had administratively, we really wanted to take account. To be fully inclusive, um, Easter and Passover. So we structured our um calendar and spring break next year around some of the most important days of Passover in alignment with. Easter and the Friday.
Any other discussion on the calendar? This is the voice vote? Okay, then all in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. Um, but with that, uh, we move to routine information items. Um, we do need in, um, we have, we have one from last one, we did, we did, okay, but we did have a, a. A harassment intimidation and bullying report. What happens is we typically talk about these in the executive session, and then the following month, we will. Vote to approve those. Obviously, that is confidential information. We cannot share that report with you, in fact, a lot of. Names and details aren't shared with us, but uh, um, so we do need a motion tonight to accept the HIV report that we discussed in. Executive session next month. So moved by Michael, thank you. Can I have a second please?
Second.
A second from Mr. Keys, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the HIV?
Copy of Spain and then just because I wasn't in.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Um, and this is also a wish, if I believe, all in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? And one extension. Okay. Uh, fire drills, as you can see, we did uh have um. Fire and safety drills on the dates listed there. Uh, the enrollment report is uh available online. And that brings us to our second period of public comment. The same rules apply as the first one. Uh, you're welcome to come up and make any statement you'd like to the board. Um, try to keep it to around three minutes. And uh with that, second public period of comment is open. Would anybody have something they'd like to bring before the board? Okay, do we have any online comments?
The one we already did, okay.
Um, so if no one has anything to bring before the board. Then we will close the second period of public comment. And uh with that, we do have a need to go into executive session this evening. Um, we will be uh coming back to this room. There will be no action taken after that executive session. I expect we'll probably be out for twenty-five to thirty minutes. So I do need a motion to go into executive session at eight fifty-six P M. So I'm moved by Ronnie, thank you, and a second please, second by Aaron, thank you, all in favor, hi.